City Council is reconvening. We were just in a closed session to discuss matters related to Tacoma Junction redevelopment project as well as personnel matters. On our agenda this evening, we did have one change. Unfortunately, and this happens because of people getting sick and other things, we are unable to have the presentation this evening of the Public Space Management Plan, and that will be going to the next city council. I want to express just my deep appreciation to the staff, especially to Alex Friedman and all, I mean, everybody's work on this and how hard they did work to try and get this council to review it. And so, we really appreciate it, and we hope our colleagues enjoy finishing that up for us in the next city council. After tonight's meeting, next week should be our final kind of official meeting, though we will come back as the city council to certify election results and then to kind of pass the baton to the next city council. But in terms of next week's agenda, we have a second reading Charter Amendment Resolution to update the Charter Amendment process, a second reading Charter Amendment Resolution to update Personnel Appeals, a resolution providing for an appointment to COLTA, a resolution regarding pedestrian and transportation safety, and a resolution regarding a labor consultant proposal. So those are all the things for next week. And then there's city elections. So I hope everybody is getting their ballots in the mail and make sure you vote in the city election. Our first item this evening on our agenda is actually a presentation on the tree canopy assessment. And am I turning this over to Director Brifway? You want to do an introduction?
Yeah.
All right, we're being joined tonight from the University of Vermont. I will just say my son goes to the University of Vermont, so I may, no, I may give you a care package on the way home. But no, thank you for coming down from Burlington. We appreciate it. And I guess I'll just turn it over to you.
Yeah, my name's Marty Frye, Urban Forest Manager for the city.
Oh, Marty, it's you. I'm sorry.
I'm just introducing.
I know, but I didn't even recognize you. I'm sorry. It's been a really long week.
It's funny, I also went to University of Vermont, so for a second I was like, I'm not going to visit anytime soon, but.
I knew that.
Yeah, haircut and.
Yes, go Catamounts.
Well, I was just going to briefly introduce on behalf of the Urban Forestry Department and Public Works, Jartlith O'Neill Dunn and the University of Vermont Spatial Analysis Lab. We've worked with them, I think, three or four times before doing a sort of three year, three or four year interval assessment of the city's tree canopy cover. And it's really helpful to be able to track the change in that canopy cover over time, and also where that canopy exists and gauging kind of disparities in which property types and which geographic regions of the city may have less or more, and being able to deploy our resources better with that information. And so, this is just a public presentation to kind of give everyone a bit of a look behind the curtains on how we conduct that kind of analysis and the data it can provide us. So with that, I'll pass it on to Jartlith.
Great, wonderful. Thank you, Marty, and thank you, councilors. I just wanted to check in to see how my audio is doing and also to make sure you can see my screen.
Actually, not yet.
It's showing up over there.
Oh, okay. I don't think, we're not seeing it on our monitors and.
It's showing up on that screen.
I will stop and I will try to share again. How's that?
It's us.
Sorry, was that, you can see it now?
No, I think we're working on it on our.
Okay, great. Well, maybe while you're working on it, I can just give you an introduction. So like Marty said, my name's Jartlith O'Neill Dunn. I'm the Director of the Spatial Analysis Lab, University of Vermont. Thank you for sending your children to us. It's a real magical time of year here up in Vermont, just before what we call stick season. And I really have the privilege of leading a team that does these tree canopy assessments for communities throughout the United States. And we've had a longstanding partnership with Montgomery Counties, Prince George's Counties, and Tacoma Park in your city. And we really appreciate you putting your faith and resources into us to allow you to look at your tree canopy over time. And this presentation is going to focus on a rather long time interval, really looking back to 2009 and seeing how things have changed. And we feel that it's so important that you understand your green infrastructure. It's absolutely crucial for the well-being of your residents. It's the best resource you have in the face of climate change. And of course, it's critical for everything from equity to a wildlife habitat to reducing stormwater runoff. And we hope that today's presentation can give you some insights into your tree canopy, so that all of you who are vested in making important decisions about your community can do so in a way that is really informed and uses the best data possible. We have data on everything, right? Our roads, our properties, our buildings, our policing, right? Think about all these things that we have data on. And it's only really recently that we've been able to have the same type of data available about our tree canopy, this crucial piece of green infrastructure. And so, I'll put on hold there and just wait till you folks give me the thumbs up that you can see everything on your end.
We're good to go.
All right, wonderful. We'll jump into it. We'll try not to make this too laborious, but I really encourage you to stop me at any time if you have questions. And I want to make sure that I leave it at the end. It's really important that you walk away feeling confident that you understand things. We'll make sure that we release our report to you that we're sending to Marty tonight, so that you have that information to go in depth. And we really believe this is stakeholder-driven, so that you can make comments and ask questions on that as well. So let's start off with really the quick summary here. So you have really robust tree canopy in your city. You're incredibly lucky. You're very, very green. Sort of somewhat bad news of that is it is declining, and we'll talk a bit about that. So these are two things, right? You've got a lot of trees, but you've also lost tree canopy, not only just in the last two years, but since 2009. And a really key factor to keep in mind, you're a predominantly residential city, and residents control most of your trees. So the fact that the trees are not on public land means that you, as a city, can exert certainly some control over them through your ordinances, but most of them really are maintained and provide benefits to your city's residents. And the key things we see for Tacoma Park going forward, to maintain your healthy tree canopy and to provide all the benefits to the citizens, are these things, like preserving what you have, right? That is really, really crucial. And in order to do that, you need to make sure that you don't shortcut maintenance. Not everything is about tree planting, although that is still important because you want to replace what you've lost. And I think if you can do those three things, you'll help to retain this robust tree canopy going forward. So now, let's dive into some of the numbers. So in 2009, you had about 61.2% tree canopy. So we do this as a percentage of your land area, so everything that's not water. And that dropped to about 57.8% in 2020, okay? But you've got a really, really healthy number, okay? There's not a lot of communities in the United States that are around 60% tree canopy, right? Especially if you look at much younger communities who are just going through their development phase, we'll see them around 14%, 20%, those types of things. So it's really robust. I'm sure you wish it wasn't declining, but that's the reality of things right now. It's important, when we say it's declining, that it's not just you're losing tree canopy. There's actually a lot of gain out there, and that's thanks to your efforts and investment in urban forestry, and it's also due to the fact that sometimes you're just leaving things alone. But that's just being outpaced by the losses. And these are large numbers, right? You think about 96 acres or 140 acres, right? It's a lot. So urban trees are very dynamic, urban ecosystems. So we have two measures of change. We have this absolute difference, which is where we're just taking that amount in 2009, subtracting the percentage in 2020. And then we have the relative change. We like to think of the relative change as sort of like an order of magnitude, much like a financial calculation. So that's where we take that, right, the 2020 minus the 2009 divided by the 2009 number. So that's sort of like a financial calculation, right? When you often hear sort of what's happening to your mutual funds or things like that, which we hope no one's looking at right now. It's not going to boost your morale. So how do we do this? Well, we do this with really, really detailed land cover mapping. And I won't get into all the fancy technologies we use, but we make use of these wonderful aerial images that are out there, and these are acquired LEFON through the USDA actually does this. They're in a very important federal program. And thanks to the investments from your counties, you also have this amazing technology called LiDAR, which you may have heard of, short for Light Detection and Ranging. LiDAR is acquired by a plane flying overhead and actually shooting a laser down. So it creates a 3D model of what you see here. The lower areas are appear black as we move through the purples and the oranges to the tallest things are the yellow. So incredible, incredible data. And from this, we like to say we map your green, your brown, your blue, and your gray infrastructure. So we have this amazing accounting of all of your land cover types at an incredible detail, below a meter in resolution. And although these data sets were developed for this tree canopy assessment, we've passed them on to Marty, and I think they're also being used for other things like some of your stormwater analyses. So this project, we hope pays a lot of dividends in other areas. And then we have to map tree canopy change over time. And this is much more challenging than just mapping it at one point in time. So let's take a look at this area here in the vicinity of Carol Ave, near Park Ave there. So here's your 2009 imagery. There's your other, your new imagery. And you can see there's a lot of differences in this. Shadows are in different locations. The imagery is of different quality because our sensors weren't as good back then. And then we've also got the LiDAR from two days, okay? And so the LiDAR wasn't as good back then. So our job, which is rather painful in many cases, and why these projects take some time, months to complete, is we've got to resolve all these data sets to develop a clear understanding of the gains, losses, and no change. So we're not just mapping in two time periods and differentiating them. We're actually mapping the change. You can see that this area here has a tremendous amount of new tree canopy growth. So here it is overlaid on top of the 2020 LiDAR. So you'll see the areas where there's loss. Those look smooth because those trees are no longer there in the LiDAR. And then if you look at it in the green, which is the gain, you can see that those areas appear rough, right? And if you switch back and forth between the two, you can see that. So a lot of that game there, those trees sometimes were planted in 2009, but they often weren't contributing tree canopy yet. They were so narrow or below the eight-foot height threshold we use. And then you can just see there's just a lot of game around your trees as well. But you can also see quite a bit of things were removed, sometimes for construction, sometimes the trees got old, right? Maybe storms came through invasive species. We chose this one because here in Vermont, Ethan Allen is our Revolutionary War hero, as some of you may know, if you've been up here. Like every other store has Ethan Allen's name in it. I live off of Ethan Allen, Ethan Allen Parkway here and near Ethan Allen Park and near his homestead. So I was pleased to see Ethan Allen Ave down there in Tacoma Park. Once again, we'll take a look at the imagery here, right? And imagery's a little bit hard to see sometimes, these changes, but you can clearly see some areas in the middle, right, where we've got a sizable patch of several trees have been removed. And you can also see the smaller trees that were really, really tiny at one point in time now have grown. In some cases, you can see trees have been removed and new trees put in their place. And you can also sort of see this happening in the LiDAR as well. And so here's another area, right? And in this case, it's clear that losses are outpacing gains, but the story just isn't loss, and it's not just gains, right? We've got a little bit of both happening here. And it's this combination of losses and gains that contribute to your current situation. Go to Hefner Park here and take a look at some of the things here, right? And so, once again, here you can really see, right, how some of these areas where large patches have been removed, but then you can also see the effects of new tree planting, that if you weren't investing in these new trees, right, I think you'd really be in a bad place right now. And these trees are going to continue to grow as long as you maintain them and add tree canopy in the future as well. We also do an inventory of your trees. So using LiDAR data, it's pretty amazing. We can give you an account of the number of your trees. You've got over 38,000 trees within your city, so that's a lot of assets, right? And so Marty's probably thinking, how am I going to maintain 38,000 things, right? If he just walks around and sees, right, a tree a minute, right? He's got 38,000 minutes to get in to visit all of his clients out there. And you can just see this overlaid on the imagery as well. One of the things that we do then is we take these trees and we bin them by height. So each one of those little numbers that you see on the x-axis there on the bottom, that's the height clause. And then these bars, the number on the y-axis there is the number of trees. And while tree height isn't always a perfect proxy for age, it's pretty good in our sort of eastern, sort of mid-Atlantic and northeast areas. We're not Tampa, Florida. We were working down there, right? They have bamboo that then grows like 10 feet in a year. And I think what's really encouraging here is that you can see you don't have any sort of real bell shape. You've got a really sort of evenly hight forest, which is a good sign. It's probably also pretty evenly aged. It's very difficult to get very, very large trees in urban areas, so it's not surprising that drops off at the end. But the good news is that you don't sort of have all of your trees towards the tail end of this, or all of your trees in the beginning, because that means they can all age out at the same time. So you're doing sort of a really good job of having this uneven-aged forest, right? So what happens to communities quite often is they go through this founder's effect. The community is built, trees get planted, they grow. People are like, hey, we've got this great tree canopy. And then the trees all begin to die off at the same time. You're very lucky that it doesn't look like you're in that situation. So there's some things that you'll see in the report, some terms out there. We use this term existing tree canopy. That's what you have right now. And then we have these two things, what we call the possible tree canopy. There's the vegetated areas where it's grassy areas. It could be a field. It could be someone's lawn. And we're just saying that space available to plant trees. Then you have these impervious surfaces that aren't buildings and roads. You could put trees in there, and you folks do do that. It just requires a lot more effort. And then we have these not suitable areas, right? Generally, your buildings and roads where it's unlikely you're going to get any large amounts of new tree canopy. So one of the ways we like to look at this is without regards to any sort of administrative or political boundaries. So this just sort of gives you an idea, these hexagons here, the percent existing tree canopy. So what percentage of the land is covered by tree canopy, right? And you can see some areas, right, especially where you've got your sort of conserved areas, your sort of parks, your natural areas, a very, very high percentage. In some places, completely closed tree canopy, up to 100%. And then, of course, as you know, you have some more commercial areas and heavily built-up areas where it does drop down into those single digits. And then we have this possible tree canopy vegetation. These are the grass and shrubby areas where there's not tree canopy right now, where you could potentially establish more tree canopy. And those exist out there. Now, you know, I was a horrible baseball player, having been brought over from England at a young age by my parents. So, you know, I wouldn't be personally offended if you planted your baseball fields with trees, but I understand that those of you that do have hand-eye coordination, right, you may not want to do that. So this is just saying that there's land available out there. It's not saying you should plant there, but just that there's land available. So the good news is, right, even though your tree canopy is declining, you still have land available to plant new trees. And then we can look at these two measures, both the absolute tree canopy change and the relative tree canopy change. And these tell us similar things, but they're also slightly different. And once again, I think the key message is here, in some areas, you do have these massive changes, especially when there's new construction has gone in, and they've gone in and removed these large patches of tree canopy. You are seeing these big declines, right? It can be 100%. And then other times, there wasn't any tree canopy there. So you can have, right, these values over 4,000%, right? It's just a massive increase in tree canopy because there wasn't much there before. So there's some big swings in the relative change, and then also in the absolute change. Once again, the losses are generally outpacing gains, but that's not true everywhere in your community. There's some real signs of hope and progress. When we look at this by wards, we can see that it's very influenced, of course, by land use. Your wards, right, your city's just under 60% tree canopy. However, you've got Ward 6 there down to 43%, right? It's much more urbanized. And then you've just got Ward 2 there, right, where you're way above the city average. Then most of the other wards, you know, sort of close there. So you certainly do have some swings, right? A little bit over 20% in the differences. And that's largely reflective of the land use, but I think something you want to keep in mind when it comes to thinking about equity. And when you look at sort of where do you have room to plant trees, right? Sometimes the areas that have low tree canopy aren't always easy to plant because you could have a lot of building and road surfaces there where it's going to be challenging to establish tree canopy. It doesn't mean you shouldn't try, and getting trees in those areas can often have a big impact, especially on things like the oven heat island. And so, when you see the tree canopy change here, the absolute change, and the relative change, sort of pretty similar patterns, right? Only Ward 5 has experienced an increase in both the absolute and relative change. And when we go to the report here, you can see we break this information down in a lot of different ways. And there's always a risk that we sort of overload you with data, but we want to make sure that you have everything you have. So that you can look at the existing tree canopy percent. That's what you have. The acreage, that's the total number of acreage in each ward. The tree canopy change area, so that's the number of acres that have lost, and then the relative change percent, right? So these all give you different measures and different insights that you can use in helping you plan a greener future. I think one of the most interesting ways to look at your tree canopy is by land use. So these are your land use categories throughout the city there. And then you can see that just breaking it down by land use type, right, this single-family clause, special single-family attached, right, is the majority land use, clear majority land used within your city. And so, when we look at these tree canopy metrics, there's some interesting patterns come out here. So take a look at parks. The existing tree canopy percentage is the highest in parks. They're very green, which is something that we would expect, right? There's not a lot of buildings, not a lot of roads. When it comes to which land use has the most acreage of tree canopy, that's the single-family detached that you see there, right? There's just more tree canopy controlled by your residents, especially those in your standard, single-family homes, anyone else. As a result, you're also seeing most of a loss happening there, okay? And then we see the relative change. Relative change is interesting. You've got some areas like warehouses and industrial. They just haven't had a lot before, so you folks did a good job of getting some trees in in the vicinity of them. So they show these massive relative increases. But I think what's really important to point out here, which is something you should be commended for, if you look at the ROW there, the rights of ways, that's your areas along the streets, you're seeing increases there. And that's really difficult to pull off. So it's really encouraging that despite having citywide losses, you're making progress within the rights of way. That's crucial for reducing stormwater runoff, crucial for the oven heat island. And it just gives people that sense of green, which we know contributes to calming factors, which does everything from lowering your broad pressure to reducing crime. When we look at the number of trees per land use clause, so these are the tree counts before we're looking at tree area, very similar pattern here with the single-family detached. But then, this coming in second place there is the right of way. So your trees within the right of way don't have a lot of canopy cover. And sometimes that canopy cover is extending into private land, but you do have a lot of them, right? So you've got thousands of trees just within the right of way. So you've got 38,000 trees within your city as a total. But then you've got thousands of trees within your right of way. And that's really important to keep in mind when you think about maintenance, right? You have thousands of green assets that are crucial to your community that need care and maintenance because the right of way, right, living along those streets is a very, very challenging place for trees. Breakdown between public and private here, sort of similar patterns, as you will have guessed, right? Most of your tree canopy, when we aggregate those land uses into public and private, we see that a lot of your tree canopy is under private control, right? Which is why things like your tree ordinances can be very important. We've also summarized all of this down to the property parcel level. So this is in your mapping technology or GIS software. You can click on a tree canopy, or excuse me, click on a parcel and find out the tree canopy, the relative change, the relative loss. So just some final thoughts here, right? You've got these both anthropogenic and environmental factors that are facing your community. It's a complex system. There's an awful lot going on. And I hope that when you sort of look at these results, you don't really think it's negative, right? It's really hard to maintain the amount of tree canopy that you have. And there's a lot of positive signs in there amongst the losses. And most of the losses are happening on residential land. So if you can find a way to stem them, right, which isn't always possible, things come up, right? You have disease, you have storms and things like that. But if you can really reduce those losses on residential land, you'll be setting yourself up for success in the future. I'm happy to discuss any questions or concerns you may have on this. And so, I'll stop sharing my screen there.
Great, wonderful. That is a terrific presentation. Very much thank you for that. And I will, I don't know if, Marty, if you have anything to add at this point, or just go to council questions?
Yeah, if I could be able to answer any as well.
Great. Let's see, Councilmember Smith first.
Thank you for the presentation. That was excellent. A lot of great information. You said that on the right of way is a way that we can increase the tree canopy. Do you have any suggestions, recommendations that would like supercharge our number of trees on the right of way and on private property? Thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Smith. So the right of way is the really challenging area to pull it off. So the fact that you have growth within your right of way speaks volumes about your urban forestry program, right? Trees are just not designed to live next to streets. It's challenging areas. And environmentally, with heat, it's very, very challenging for their root base. And there's no magic button or Staples Easy button, right, that's going to get you more trees. As Marty knows, he's on the ground there, right? I'm not on the ground in Tacoma Park. It's a lot of work, right? And it's finding those spaces. It's prepping those spaces. So I think you're in a stage right now where clearly you're planting in the right of way in the past has paid off. And from our analysis, looking at things from above, it's really thinking about, hey, if a tree is removed, make sure you replace it, and maintaining what you have, right? Your right of way and the number of trees there is really, really healthy. You just cannot sort of short-change your investment there. When it comes to private land, it's a little bit of a different story, right? The right of way, we've seen an increase in tree canopy. Private land, especially your residential land, we're seeing losses there. And that is tricky, right? So losses generally event. Maybe it's a storm. Maybe it's a disease. Maybe it's an invasive species. Or maybe it's a landowner who sees a tree come down in their neighbor's yard and suddenly gets worried. Or maybe they put an extension on their home. You've got so many factors going in there. And a lot of this just gets down to how people perceive tree canopy and their value. And I think the challenge for you, councillor, in a city that is so green, right, is convincing people to maintain their tree canopy because they see a lot of tree canopy around them, right? You have this really, really robust green infrastructure there that if they travel to another community, I can imagine people saying, gosh, you know, well, we've got way more trees. Why do I need to worry about this one in my backyard? But if you continue to see this trend of tree canopy loss on residential land, it's going to hurt you in the future. And I don't live in Tacoma Park, so I don't really think it's my place to say you should pass this or that. But certain things that you have on the books right now, like your tree ordinances and those types of things combined with residential education programs, can go a long way to ensuring that you maintain this. Because the important thing to remember with trees is that although you, as the city government, don't control the trees and don't, of course, mostly manage them on private land, they do serve a public good, right? And it's the heat island, right, stormwater runoff, all of these things, right? Unless everyone is contributing to that in the way of having tree canopy on their properties, everyone also hurts from that, right? With your dealing with the ill effects of whether it's climate change or just water treatment.
That was excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you. That was a second in my question as well. A couple of things just to clarify. So there's slides, and there's a report. And will we be sent both of those?
Yes, councillor, you will. So there's a slide, there's the report, and then there's all the data as well. So one of the.
I'll pass on the data.
Yeah, yes. Well, we, one of the things is want to make sure that Marty has it and the rest of your folks in the city government have access to it. And we do say that even though there's technically a contract out there, right, and we love working with Marty, we love the relationship we have with you. So if it turns out that you come back, and I think Marty and I, we still have some ideas, sort of some subsequent analyses we'd like to do with these data, we'll be doing that as well. And the report is something that we really love your input in.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I don't know if it is possible, given the schedule between now and the new year, but I remember the first time we did one of these, there was a presentation for the public and a chance to ask more in-depth questions. And so, maybe we should be thinking about. and a chance to ask more in-depth questions. And so maybe we should be thinking about trying to do one of those, just a thought.
Sure.
That, but, but more, uh, more to the point, all of the data is based on from the first report to today, the eleven years. Is there, yeah. So is there, is there, are, is there a breakdown from the time period since the last report three years ago? And specifically what I'm wondering about is the white oak die-off and the impact of that on the older, the more mature trees. Cause that's a a piece of, you, you made the very clear point that that's a piece, not the whole, the, the whole sum of the action around here. But it's a piece that people are concerned about. Uh, and I want to hear a little more about that.
Yeah, you've, you've certainly got a few dozen acres um that have just been lost in the last couple of years. So we did pull out sort of looking at twenty eighteen until, until the twenty twenty. So just in that two-year period, you had some loss. And we're going to run some additional analyses on that to tease out the size of those trees that were lost.
That's what I was wondering.
That'll get you some, because we do have this amazing LiDAR data and in twenty eighteen it was quite good. So we do know that theirs, I think it's a little over forty acres was lost in that two-year period. And so the next thing that we'd like to do to provide you with a little bit more clarity is sort of what, what is the height of theirs? And I think that'll that'll help to, to provide some hard evidence and facts behind sort of what you're got feeling is, which is probably correct, right? That you've lost a lot of trees in that time period, right? Due to, due to these, this unfortunate disease for your oak trees and and that it's probably some of the large ones that were providing important ecosystem services. Large trees are great for the oven heat island. They're, they're great for wildlife, right? Um, they're great for cooling your house. Um, and it's really sad to, to see them go.
But I was really impressed with the graph that showed the age of, age distribution of the trees. And, and I, and all the younger mature trees coming up, I was not expecting that. I think that's really good news.
Yeah, it is. It is good news. It is. You're absolutely right, because the, the, the you can think about this over time, right? When you have a large tree with a large diameter canopy, if that just grows a tiny bit, even though it's hard to see, if it just grows a tiny bit, because it's so big, that tiny bit really adds up. So often it's the small trees when you look at the imagery, like wow, look how much they grew. But it's actually all of those large trees that are just every year incrementally adding more tree canopy that are, that are more impressive. And I'm not just saying this because I'm, I'm middle-aged and I'm plugging middle-aged trees, but uh, but the, the younger, the, the younger ones are still important. And you're right, you've got this nice height distribution of your canopy. And I think that'll serve you well in the, in the long term.
I have a lot of technical questions, but I'll hold them for after I get the report and the slides and have a chance to look at it closely at them. I am really pleased to have this report for the outgoing council that's done so much work on the tree ordinance. And I really thank um you at the University of Vermont and also Marty for putting this all together.
Thank you. It was really a team effort. We're really lucky to have Marty as such an engaged stakeholder in the, in the process. We don't we don't always get that with these. Sometimes it's sort of go off and do it. And Marty's been engaged along and pushing us. And it's been really wonderful.
Thank you.
Great. Um, Councilwoman Cersei.
Great. Well, I want to echo um my colleagues in appreciation of the great presentation and the report. I look forward to reading it. So the ward I represent is Ward six. And so um, we've always been low in canopy. We've been working on it though. So I did see some progress, which is great. Um, but one of the, the major challenges that has hit us pretty hard is the fact that we have so many large commercial par- parcels and lots of construction, right? Um, and so uh, we're at a point now where we're able to perhaps leverage some external resources, but just the feasibility challenges of trying to not only plant on private property where you need the, the will of the property owner, but how to actually plant trees in what is es- in essence, a very urbanized um location. Have you or are you aware of best practices, different approaches, some communities are taking to try to tackle this challenge? Because I know, working with Marty and, and we, we are at a point, we have the resources, but just trying to figure out how to make them grow in some of these areas is a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, and Marty, I think it'll be important for you to weigh in here. So Counselor, yeah, you're, you're right. It's sort of these areas that are the the hardest to plant trees are the ones where they also have a, the biggest impact. And I think you sort of nailed all the challenges, right? It's, it's private land. It's it's heavily paved. So then you're dealing with things like, first of all, hey, can we get landowner consent? And maybe you can control them. Maybe you can sort of shame them into, into having more tree canopy. But we, there is good, good evidence out there, right? That if you have a treat area, especially commercial district, there's good peer-reviewed literature that says people are more more likely to shop there, right? I mean, gosh, look where people park their cars in the summertime. We like to be under, under, under trees. Um, but the site improvement issues are, are not trivial, right? You've got to get in there and it's not just about sticking a living organism in the ground. It's about finding room for their roots and ensuring that there's adequate exposed soil so that water would get in there. And then you've got things with the underground infrastructure. So it's it's really challenging. We do see, I think, some of the, the best examples I've seen from other communities or or when people combine multiple goals, right? And it's thinking about, gosh, maybe not just about trees, but how we handle stormwater runoff for these areas and building some of these natural catch areas and really thinking about the impacts that they have on reducing those hot summer temperatures. Because I'm sure you know, since you live there, Counselor, you go out to these big parking lots in the summer and it is really, really oppressive heat. And it's not, it's not like, it's not like twenty twenty-three, it's going to be better in twenty twenty-four, it's going to be better, right? It's going to get hotter and hotter. And without that green infrastructure, those areas are going to continue to be inequitable to people who shop there, who live there, recreate there, whatever it is. But Marty, would you like to weigh in at all on sort of some of the strategies that you've been doing?
Yeah, I don't have anything particular to, and Lucy and I have talked a bunch and walked these sites together and um, you know, um, you know, part of it is, you, you know, you look at the maps and, uh, you know, there is a ton of commercial area and it has a ton of parking lot. There still are some plantable spots. And so one answer is, um, you do everything we can to reach the property owners. Um, and uh, really make it as easy for them to plant in the locations that are available as possible. Um, as Dartless mentioned earlier, you know, the, the, the net benefit or the, the sort of benefit to a location that has no trees and tons of pavement um, is much better than it would be somewhere with lots of trees. And so even just getting one tree next to that parking lot can can really, you know, make a huge difference. Um, so that's been our approach so far is a, uh, really doing the direct outreach, trying to engage these property owners. Um, and also our, our new Tree Tacoma Program, uh, reducing the cost barrier. Um, and also providing the professional expertise through the consultation. Basically making people as comfortable with a tree as possible and make the barrier, the cost barrier zero um, is part of the approach. Um, uh, the more sort of intensive solutions would be, well, obviously in the kind of planning and design process, if these, some of these bigger properties are ever slated for a big redevelopment, that would be a sort of a key point to get in um, at the, at the design level. And um, and then, I mean, there's the conversation about sort of investing kind of in the tens of thousands of dollars per site when you're talking about removing pavement and uh, kind of like bringing in brand new soils. That is an option if, when properties are open to that idea. Um, we've never really gone there as far as trying to make that the thrust of where city dollars are, are going, just because the, the cost per tree can be really astronomical. Um, it's worth the discussion though. And I mean, I, I've seen some presentations on those kinds of efforts and it's exciting, you know, when you can transform a parking lot into a, you know, a, a bit of a little urban forest. Uh, that, that's great. So um, it's worth mentioning that I don't know if the appetite is for kind of shifting in that direction necessarily.
Yeah.
This area here that we're looking at, right? Like you can see what you've done, two thousand nine to twenty twenty-one. I mean, take a look at that area off to the left. Wow, I mean, look at that, right? There's actually a little patch of forest. In two thousand nine, it was just all those individual trees at the edge of the parking lot, right? And now the canopies are closing in. You are losing some trees due to new construction, but you should really be commended for that. It's really great stuff.
And, and Marty, I do think you bring up a really good point and something that maybe a future council will, will need to think through is you know, how, especially as development sometimes can happen quicker maybe than, than you may um initially anticipate. How do we try to work or think through how to require aspects of tree planting as part of certain types of development projects in the city? How do we work with those partners to make sure that if there are resources that are available, we can do it? Because I know um, with the Hillwood Manor um, project, you know, the, the utility work required the loss of trees, which then, you know, kind of creates this, you know, this conundrum of having to remove due to utilities, but wanting to figure out ways to replant. And so how can we start thinking about development, major renovation projects and how to kind of create more incentives for tree plantings? I think is, is a really really good approach and, and how we maybe want to think about that and have those resources available to help incentivize that tree planting is going to be important going forward. So thank you for that.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. And uh, thank you for the presentation. And uh, thank you, Marty as well. Um, one of the things I was curious about was you compared uh, the numbers in two thousand and nine to today. And then we did it, I think, maybe three other times in between there. And if I remember correctly, although at one point it went up and then it went down a little bit. I thought that the last time I did it, three years ago, it was only at around fifty-eight percent anyway. So I'm just wondering whether, not that any decline is good, it would be better if it went up. And of course, that, that would be preferable, but do you have at hand there what it was the three years previously? Because I think it looks like, um, my recollection anyway, is that that decline was a little bit less. If that question makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it does, Counselor. And so one of the tricky things, and you may have noticed this when I was sort of growing, going through these slides of imagery and LiDAR is that is that the data are not the same, right? And unfortunately, we, we don't have Marty McFly and we don't have the DeLorean where we can go back in time and collect the fly LiDAR imagery with the same awesome sensors that we have today. This is technology that really does change um, on a monthly, on a monthly basis. So one of the things that we put in a tremendous amount of effort to this time was saying, gosh, we we've done these tree canopy assessments before. And we really wanted to make sure that any differences that we were capturing were not differences due to the data source. So if you just sort of run our algorithms on the, on the data as is, and I can talk about this for hours and I'll really try not to. Uh, you, you get a lot of differences that are actually just due to the data. In some cases, the LiDAR will hit off a branch in one time period, and then it'll make its way through the ground in another, just the way, just the luck of where the laser is. And then you have the fact that they're the level of detail, the resolution of them is not the same. So we really focused for this on homogenizing the data between the two thousand nine to twenty twenty-one time period. So we could really draw conclusions over this larger timeframe where patterns of development really show up. And then what we're also working on finalizing now is looking at these last couple of years um, with the impact to the yokes and seeing what that has been. So this is why the numbers are slightly, slightly different. Our algorithms are better, uh, the data are better. And sometimes we're quite frankly, sort of picking up trees that we, we didn't before, or now because the data are better, we're realizing before that we call things that are trees that are not. So anytime you do one of these assessments, there's new data, it's better. And you just get better information. But as part of that, we make sure that it agrees with the previous things. We're not just doing a new map and differencing, which is why we can't just sort of take those old, old results and do the math. We could do that. It's just not accurate. So please let me know if that's not clear. We are putting in our report a section that we hope will at least sort of help you understand why, why we went, why we went about this. Um, it's not rocket science, but it's still pretty darn challenging.
I understand why you're saying it. I still think since we had those numbers, we should have them just to compare. Um, one other question is in the, the non-bell curve uh graphic that you had there that showed the, the uh heights of the various trees. And so at the back end or the far end on the right, where the tallest trees were, it had kind of a bell curve drop off. But on the other side with the younger trees, it didn't. So is the fact that in that graphic, as it's represented, that there are apparently a, a good number of younger trees? Is that something that could help uh, as those younger trees get older, kind of catch up in a way on?
Yeah, absolutely. Cause there's, I think it's a really good sign because those young trees are in those, those teenage years, right? And I I have two teenagers. One, one is a boy who I, I think is just trying to bankrupt me with grocery bills, right? This seems to be his, his mission in your life. And those teenage trees do grow considerably. And, and this is what we've seen in the imagery. There's some trees and there's slides I shared before near that uh commercial area, you really see that they're exploding. So I think you, you really nailed it there, that, that these trees, as long as you can maintain them, they're gonna keep adding canopy over time. And it's just not surprising, right? The trees over right, ninety feet, there's just not a lot of them, right? That's difficult to maintain in urban areas, right? Old growth forests and, and, and urban, urban, urban living just sort of don't, don't uh, don't always agree with one another. But you've, you've got some really nice sized trees in your community. And the fact that you've got these young ones really, I think, does bode well for the, for the future.
All right. And the only other thing I mentioned is, I mean, we've started prioritizing, to some extent, anyway, plant, uh, offering plantings on private property. And I think that's an especially important thing to continue. And I think we got a good start. And I'm, Marty's nodding a little bit over there. Uh, because your data do clearly show that that's the, I don't know if it's okay to say the most fertile area potentially for, for uh, more planning, but it's the biggest uh, area. And so I think continuing to find ways to do that, but maybe not limiting it just to uh, single-family homes uh, is, is a a good approach for us to take.
Yeah, absolutely. Your, your residents have the most tree canopy, the most losses on residential land, the most room to plant tree canopy is on residential land, right? But you're absolutely right. And especially, I think, I think what can be lost is, is some of these areas that were mentioned before, right? Where there's a lot of impervious surfaces that gosh, those areas may be really difficult to plant trees, but it's also areas where individual trees have outsized impacts, right? You put a tree on someone's lawn, that's still awesome. You can get trees over impervious surfaces that really, really helps with the stormwater and open heat island aspects.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Right.
Great. I'm not seeing any other um, hands up this evening. Um, again, Marty, anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say apologize for not getting that report out to you all in advance. Um, did what we could. There were some kind of the draft came through and then there were some extra questions that we had as far as taking the data a step further. And um, so we're excited to have a, a robust report um, shortly to get to you all.
Great. Awesome. Well, we're looking forward to it. This was, I'm glad we were able to um, have the presentation um, this evening. Um, it was fantastic. Um, thank you for joining us. Um, and I, I do hope you enjoy the weather in Burlington and the leaves. And um, thank you, uh, Marty and to uh, Director Braithwaite for all the great work that um, you are doing on our, our tree canopy um, and thinking about innovative ways and programs to um, you know, do more tree planting and the education. We really appreciate your advocacy and work on all of this. So thank you very much um, for that this evening. And I'm sure there'll be more to come when the new council um, comes in. So thank you. Um, all right. Next, we will now move, thank you for the presentation, um, to public comments. We will first take public comments in the oratorium on our voting item this evening, which is a second reading ordinance amending the ethics code. Any public comments on that? See, and I don't believe we had any online comments tonight. Oh, okay. I didn't see that. Um, any on voting items? Okay. Then when we move to um, other public comments, are there any other um, public comments in the oratorium tonight? Okay, Mary Jane, go ahead.
Hi. Uh, thank you for coming, everybody. Uh, I'd like to see more people, but hey, thanks for you to come, for who came. And Mary Jane Machui Ward two. Uh, I also like to thank the three people running for mayor and the fifteen people who are running for council seats. And uh, thank you for your interest and for your having the energy and, and you're brave enough to do this. And also I just want to say that uh uh, I had brought up uh, with Cindy and the Housing Director briefly, the visioning uh, open house of the possibility of my uh, home and uh yard being used as housing for people with disabilities. The, the two main challenges are, it's very small. It's only two bedroom, one bath. And also uh, two people live there, me and my son, and we can't afford to live anyplace else to move there. Okay, well, if, if there is construction, but I would appreciate any help I could get from anybody in. to move there, okay, well, if there is construction. But I would appreciate any help I could get from anybody in this area. And I'm just saying that the goals of parents' special needs don't remain the same. Supportive housing, which I just mentioned. Recreation, I've also brought up with Mr. Smith and others, the possibility of why can't seniors be in the, I mean, just a just non senior disabled people be enrolled in the senior classes? And and to me, it's a no brainer, but I don't know. And because it's less competitive in those classes, and they run a little slower pace, and it might be more suitable people with disabilities. But I brought that up many, like seven years ago with the head of the Recreation Department. He says, no, I can't do anything about it, he said, because this whole city council had to approve it, he said. And so I brought it up to city council in one of these meetings, and no one took it up. So I'm bringing it up again. I mean, and I'm sorry, this seems like a simple matter, but and also, public safety is another issue is brought up whenever members because sometimes when you're act odd, people think you're you're scared, you're scared of them, us, or whatever. And the second one is jobs with dignity. My son has a horrible job where he has no set schedule, and of course, weekend holidays, and he can't work home on his computers like many people. So and and I've heard people complain about their kids' college educations live in their basement. I don't even have that option. My son will never probably go to college. And he can't live in my basement because it's not finished. Anyways, thank you very much for listening again. Thank you, Jesse, for letting me in this time. Appreciate it. And thank you, everybody else for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chui.
Good evening, council members. My name is Emmanuel Asafaw. I have lived in Tacoma Park for over thirty years. My address is six, six, six Houston Avenue. I had an issue with the police. My car was getting towed. Okay, the crime I did was, I had a car unregistered, no tag, parked in a parking lot, not on a public lot. So there was an issue with a towing company, and the towing company came to tow the cars. I said, you're not supposed to tow after seven AM in the morning. And we disagreed, and the police came. Police ID is eight, four, seven, six. I don't have his name. Police gave me about five different citations. One of them is driving unregistered, no tag, no insurance on state highway. I was not driving. It was part, the car was parked in a parking lot. Not on Houston Street or Hudson Street, none of the streets. So he didn't even give me a chance to talk. And he's saying, you drove this car from so and so and so. No, I didn't drive it. The car's parked right here. I have five different issues, tickets. One, one of them is I have to go to court. So if the car was parked in my apartment, am I breaking the law? If the car was in my kitchen, am I breaking the law? I feel like the police use too much power, too much authority to give me this, all these fines. I don't have money for lawyer. I don't have all this money to pay five hundred, almost five hundred dollar tickets. So, you know, does this rule apply to individual houses? There's a, there's a lot of people parked with tag or expired tag or broken cars in their garage. I feel like I was so violated. Not just violated, I felt the city of Tacoma Park is a racist city. Under, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Could you please speak to our Deputy City Manager, Mr. Clark, before you leave tonight, and so he can get your information and follow up with you? Thank you very much.
Buddy Daniels, nine zero eight Prospect Street. Last Friday, October fourteenth, Piney Branch Pool had an open house before reopening Monday, October seventeenth. At the Friday night open house, there were around seventy five to a hundred people standing in line to purchase a six month pass for half price. Now, all those nice people standing in line surprised me in a really very good way. I have always felt that our community would support Piney Branch Pool reopening post COVID, and they did, and they have. At one time, many years, for many years, the pool was an anchor in our community. The pool has been around since nineteen seventy two, along with the outdoor pool Long Branch. As I have said in the past, the nineteen seventies and the nineteen eighties, Piney Branch Pool rocked. It rocked. It was programmed from Monday through Friday, six thirty AM to ten at night, and on Saturday and Sunday from nine AM to eight thirty. I know Piney Branch rocked because I helped to program it in the nineteen eighties. We taught lessons, coached swim teams, coordinated early bird swim, and of course, public swimming times. That pool was in use all day long for seven days a week. It was a really fun and exciting time because the community cared about the pool and the pool staff cared about the community. That pool is part of my family's history and legacy, and I'll be glad to discuss that history or the pool's history anytime. But Piney Branch is also such an important part of so many families' histories in our community. This is, now, this is twenty twenty two. And with what I saw last Friday night, so much support for the pool, I feel Piney Branch will rock again. And in that time, the pool will be programmed from six thirty in the morning till ten at night and used on the weekends. I know the pool's very old and simple designed by today's aquatic standards. No big slides, no diving boards, no hot tub. But that pool's got heart. It's got heart. Walk in there sometime when a swim team is practicing or swim lessons are going on, and you're going to feel it. And again, Piney Branch hopefully will rock again, and the pool will become the community anchor it once was. Well, I saw Friday night and what I've been hearing in the community lately. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, any other public comments in the auditorium this evening? All right, seeing none, I I don't know who's on online.
Sure, we have Mr. Wayne Sherwood first, and then after that, Mr. Kenneth Allen.
Okay, great. Or maybe?
I can't start the video. It said I can't do it. But I'd be glad to just do it by audio if that was okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Sherwood. Sorry, apologies for the video issues.
Okay. Yeah, it says the host has stopped the video. Okay, my name is Wayne Sherwood. I live on Ward, Ward one on Grant Avenue. And first, I'd like to thank Mayor Stewart for making an announcement last, last week for a celebration of the life of Pamela Larson. And just to repeat that, it's going to be this coming Saturday, three days from now, five thirty PM at the middle school. The it'll probably go for an hour and a half. It's a public event. Everybody is welcome, and we hope that you'll come and celebrate her, her life. And Cedric Davis is going to be there, too. Pam was very active in the Tacoma Park Festival, Folk Festival for a decade. She was a leader in that. She was a leader in the Tacoma Park Soccer. She was a coach, and she maintained a shoe exchange on her, on her front porch. She was active in the DC Labor Course. And they will be there and participating this coming Saturday. And she was one of those people that like keep on, keep on fighting and and never give up. She was active in her job for in terms of retirement programs all around the world. And she traveled all around the world and spent time giving talks in China about how they could improve their retirement programs, especially for women. She had solar panels on her house. She was welcoming to immigrants. She went on the Peace Corps to Panama. She was somebody that I think symbolizes Tacoma Park spirit of being a welcoming community. But but one thing I would add is that even though she was optimistic and all the time, she knew that it took a struggle. Those things don't come easily. And she encountered a lot of struggles in her life. And it was a great asset that she had to know that those things just don't drop in your lap, that you have to work for them and you have to fight for them. So please come out on Saturday at the middle school and help us celebrate and have something to eat. Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherwood. Do we have Mr. Allen? Yes.
Mine also says the video is unable to start, but also I'll just go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Allen, go ahead.
I live, my name is Ken Allen. I live on Jackson Avenue in Ward Two, and thank you for the opportunity. Last Sunday, October sixteenth, nineteen volunteers worked with the Climate Action Coffee Group to remove non native invasives from Dorothy's Woods. Following instructions from Annamisha John, our city gardener, we cut, dug, pulled and piled up nine different kinds of plants. Along with Randy Gibson, I coordinated this event. Bruce Sidwell gave help, a helpful introduction to the history of the area. Randy gave a brief history of Dorothy's Woods. We had five certified weed lawyers to lend expertise. In two hours, we called, we cleared a small but noteworthy fraction of all the invasives in the area. In preparing for this event, I worked with Daryl Braithwaite and Annamisha John. Anna was key to identifying which plants to remove and exactly how each should be handled. The new electronic system for registering the event and filling out waivers is a good improvement over the previous paper system. There is still room for improvement. The ten day before the event requirement for the waivers is definitely not necessary. The bigger question that came up as we worked is the future of Dorothy's Woods. Climate Action Coffee has developed a vision, but clearly there are several possible answers. The covenant demands that it remain a woodland park of some kind. The city, with input from residents, will eventually make the final decision. But it seems to me there might be interim steps. One possible step could be the spread of wood chips to make paths. It would encourage enjoyment of the property, giving an easy way for people to see the whole property, including the many native trees and plants. It would also make it easier to remove more invasives. Wood chips can remove or will simply decompose in a few years. I'm confident this could be done by volunteers with wood chips donated by tree companies. Secondly, if you actually walk around Dorothy's Woods, you might notice some new plants have been added. The invasives will be less likely to grow back if new native species are added. It is wonderful that many citizens are willing to donate their time and energy to to improve the value, this valuable resource that is Dorothy's Woods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Allen. And thank you for all your work on Dorothy's Woods. Do we have any other public comments this evening? All right. Seeing none, I will move on to council comments. Councilmember Simmons, are you ready to go?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. And I'd like to follow up on the comments about the Piney Branch Swimming Pool. As most of you know, my wife is the Director of Pool Operations. And she want to thank community for showing such large amount of support during the open house last Friday. But she also wants me to apologize to the community that the pool broke down the next day. I guess it's like many of us, that with age, the parts don't always work. And so anyways, the heating system went out. And the workers have been in there this week trying to repair that. They finally got the parts they need, and their estimate is that it's going to be November first before the pool actually is able to open the doors again with warm water. Moving on, the, there's a company is going through the process to install new cell antennas on the Park Ridge apartments. And there are community members that are very concerned about the, about the residents of that building and surrounding, and the surrounding area. And the, that comes from the fact that the radiation from these antennas are as much higher than what previous antennas have been. And yet, their, their way of determining whether it's safe for the tenants and for the surrounding community members is done just mathematically rather than actually measuring the radiation after the installation. And I would like to ask the council to support passing a resolution to have the city contract with a professional scientific company that can actually measure the, the radiation from the antennas once they're installed in the top floors of the building where they are installed and in and some of the surrounding community to see how safe these antenna are and how well the measurements parallel the mathematical formulas that are used by the commission that approves these on just the, the algorithm that the scientists have put together. So again, we can talk about that. And and I think we should invite some of the community members to help with drafting the resolution so that we can put an end to the concerns one way or the other. Also, I would just like to comment on the current election process. I really pleased to see the amount of contented races this year. It's easy for me to see that because my race isn't contented. But I, I think it's really healthy for the community to have the contented races and so many choices to make. I think it's been, I watched the, the forums that the WWD radio station put on right here in this auditorium. And I think they were well conducted and the, and the the candidates were all giving excellent answers and and good consideration of their opponents. I know, though, that as we get closer to the election, tensions raise as campaigning gets even heavier. And I just hope we can continue to see you know, everybody playing well together through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
First, I want to join Councilmember Siemens and his his thoughts on a resolution for forthcoming council on measuring radiation at Park Ridge. But I would suggest that we do that for any future 5G installation for a property in the city of Tacoma Park. I would like to thank all the residents that came out tonight to give comments. I would like to say regarding Mr. Emmanuel at the three sixes on Houston Avenue. I sent your voicemail to Mr. Clark and our Chief Duval to have them contact you and see how we can resolve this issue. And finally, I will be at the street festival this weekend, so look forward to seeing residents. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Demala.
Thank you. So I, I had a bunch of thank yous for staff, but some of you have beat me to it. So thank you to Director Braithwaite, and particularly to gardener Anna for, for, as you heard, for the, for the making the Dorothy's Woods cleaner, sorry, invasives session possible. I really appreciate it. And I like to see that spirit carried to And I'd like to see that spirit carried to other parks in the, in the, within the city and not just, not just one, not just focused on that one property. But I, I really appreciate the streamlining of the process to sign up for these events. And I shout out to the volunteers who organized it because they did the work. It was great. It was a wonderful morning. I want to thank the Neighborhood's Association, Long Branch Lego, for hosting a Meryl debate, which was well-attended. And it was a beautiful, again, a beautiful day and a lovely afternoon, and I learned a lot about the candidates. And I got really good feedback from people in the community, in the neighborhood about that. So thanks all around there. And on the Minor Master Plan Planning Session last night, which was both well-attended but also by a segment of the community, not by all of the folks who live close to the target area, who live within the target area. Thank you for doing that because it was another great evening. It's really nice to be able to come out and, and mingle and, and be able to discuss these things informally. So as I said, lots of thanks to go around. I'll be at the Street Fest. It'll be fun. Two more things. I have two more sessions, outdoor office hours in parks. The first two were great. And this Thursday, Sligo Creek at Flower from 5:00 to 6:00. And next Monday at Colby Park, Colby Neighborhood Park, 5:00 to 6:00, weather depending. If it snows, I'm probably not going to be there. And I'm practicing for my Christmas trip. But the last thing I wanted to say is to echo two things that Councilmember Siemens said. I would be interested to, to talk with you about what the cost of that would be because I think there's, there's a project there maybe, depending on how much it, it winds up being for the small cell antenna measurements. And to, to, to also say that the, the energy in the city these last few weeks, the discussion, the debate has been great. And I hope that we can continue to have positive civil and productive conversations about issues going forward between now and November 8th. Let's see if we can keep that going. Thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Circe.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank all of the people who came out and spoke tonight. I really appreciate your feedback. I would like to follow up Deputy City Manager Clark as it relates to making sure that there are programs for individuals with disabilities, be it through our senior programs or other alternatives. I think that's something that's important that we want to highlight. The, also want to thank Mr. Emanuel for coming out and expressing those concerns. And I'm grateful that Deputy City Manager Clark was able to follow up with him directly. Also, thank you to all of those who volunteered for the Dorothy's Woods cleanup. Definitely want to send a special shout out to Climate Action Coffee folks and all of those that volunteered. The Piney Branch Pool opening was amazing. It was awesome. And so there are so many residents. I, I was surprised, I, I, there are so many residents from Ward Six that came out, which was awesome, and are excited about the pool. So look forward to it opening up again. And also, the Minor Master Plan Visioning Session last night was amazing. One thing that I believe there is a second, I believe the Washington Advances community is hosting another, I believe on November the 2nd.
Yeah, the Washington Events University.
University, correct.
Not the city and county, right.
Correct. So if we, I want to just make sure that we're able to make sure that residents are aware of that. And I don't know how we need to go about making sure that that information is easily available. I know that we received the little, the QR codes and the, and the cards and things, but others who maybe were not able to attend last night but might be interested in participating in that on November the 2nd, it would be helpful to make that information available. And I too will be at the Street Fest on Sunday and just want to encourage people to stop by and say hello at my table. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kostick.
Good evening, everyone. Want to echo my colleagues' thanks to all the public commenters who came out tonight. I too would be interested in understanding if, if it would be possible for people with disabilities to take part in senior classes or there might be some other alternative to offer opportunities. Would be interested in hearing a little more about that. Appreciate Mr. Emanuel coming out. And as Councilmember Circe said, appreciate that Mr. Clark was able to follow up with him. Mr. Daniels, thank you for telling us more about the Piney Branch Pool. It's really great to hear that many people were out. And hope, hopefully, we can get it up and, and running again soon. I think, as you said, the, the energy there is great. My children have always found it to be their absolute favorite pool of any of them, so I, I think it's a great place. And Mr. Sherwood, thank you for telling us more about Ms. Larson and, and reminding us of her work. And then Mr. Allen as well for, for the Climate Action Coffee update. In terms of my own updates, I just wanted to share a little bit of a readout from the Transportation Planning Board meeting today. We had a really fascinating report on the state of the commute. The TPB does a survey every couple of years to find out a little more about commuting patterns. And so it's particularly interesting, given COVID and some of the changes that have happened recently, the number of people, as might be expected, who are teleworking has gone up significantly. And in many ways, from an environmental and transportation perspective, that is good news. Unfortunately, the number of people driving alone has also increased and transit use is down. So we have some good things and some bad things. And there's also probably a little bit that has, has shifted because of COVID and might shift again as we kind of settle out and find our, our new normal. But it's a really fascinating report. And if anyone's interested, there's a lot to delve into there. I'm happy to share it, happy to share with council or others who are interested. It's, it's a long report, but really fascinating information. And also delves into some of the reasons people list for why they use alternative modes of transit instead of driving. And I think there's a lot of interesting data to dig into there in terms of our work encouraging mode shift. So lots of great information there and a great discussion at the board meeting. We also talked about the next update on the Long Range Transportation Plan, which we are doing a little earlier than normal because the board asked for an update earlier to help progress our climate change work. I think there's a little bit of work to be done still to make sure that that actually does effectively progress our climate change work, but it's moving in the right direction. So we'll have another discussion in November. And I hope future council members will continue that work and advocating there because I think there's, there's a great need for it. And, and our voice as a city has been important in pushing that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Kostick, for your work on TPB. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I first like to thank Wayne Sherwood for taking the time to tell us more about Pam Larson. She's somebody I first met when I was initially getting on to the city council. And she really is a lovely, was a lovely person, but also her life and her work is emblematic of the kind of community involvement that we prize here in Tacoma Park. And she did that both locally and internationally. So I'm, I'm not able to attend her ceremony because I have a family wedding on, on the weekend. But I do commend those who, who know her to, to attend. I'd also associate myself with the remarks by Terry Siemens and others about the cell towers. And I think having a, a policy that moves us toward accurately measuring those emissions is, is a good idea. And I would suggest maybe we could have a small meeting first just to figure out the parameters of that with a few of the people in the community who have done it because I, I don't think we're at the point right now when we could have that resolution ready. But I think if we pull together a meeting with, with relevant staff and perhaps representatives from the county as well, we could move ourselves forward on that. So I, so I appreciate that Mr. Siemens brought that up. Two other things I wanted to say. I did have an opportunity today to go by the new library site. It's the temporary site over on New Hampshire Avenue. Today was the first day it opened. And I don't post things on Facebook that often, but I posted a few photos of it there. But it looks really, really great. It looks, it doesn't look like a temporary facility. It looks like a, something that's been up and running for a while. And the staff were there, and it really looks great. And it's quite spacious and a lot of windows. So I encourage people to head over there if they haven't already had a chance to, to see where it is. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, I certainly understand the concerns about our inability to get as far as we wanted to on the Public Space Management Plan. One of the things that I had recommended that be included in that plan, and we'll see where that goes with the next council, was some more firm guidelines on, I guess I would say, ongoing upkeep and maintenance of, of parks in the city. And as part of that, I'd just like to mention, and maybe Public Works and the rest of the staff could take a look at this, the field conditions over in Bell Ziegler Park are, are, I think, kind of getting subpar or beyond that these days. And I know it's always a challenge because if you replant and re-grade and so on, then you have to close it off to the use of people for a while. So there's no great answer on how to do it. But number one, I hope we'll have language along those lines in the Public Space Management Plan. But I would appreciate if the staff could take a look at the condition of Bell Ziegler prior to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. And I don't know, did we actually have the photographs from the library? Were we able to do that? Because I got to go over today too. And if we don't have them today, we can, do we have them? Cool. But we thought we would show some of the pictures so everyone got to see. Here's the computers. So we have the computer lab and maybe other pictures? There's the one, there's the computers. There's the poster.
A poster in the library.
The poster in the li, is it a poster? There are tables and books on shelves. It looks really nice. The staff did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. You walk in and it's, it's a library. So I just want to thank our HCD Director, David U. Banks, our library director, Jessica Jones. There's some of our library staff as you walk in. It's just, it's really, I mean, our IT department, Public Works, everyone who worked on this project. It's, it looks, it's very welcoming. And it's just, it's, it looks like a great space. And so I just, congratulations to the staff for this. Just so folks know, it is on New Hampshire Avenue where the Salvation Army used to be. So it's, it's terrific. And I hope everyone gets a chance to, to visit it. And they are looking at programming. I think I heard maybe yoga there or something. So check out the website. But just, I just really want to extend my thanks to the staff. It was just, it's, it's phenomenal. So congratulations. I won't repeat what everyone else said. Thank you to everyone who came out today. And I know our, our deputy city managers have some follow-up that they'll do with some of the residents. And on regarding the emissions on cell towers, I want to remind my colleagues that we have been advocating at the federal level for those guidelines to be updated. At the federal level, they were, the last time those, the RF emissions on cell towers were updated were the early 90s. And we have continued to advocate for those to be looked at again and reset at the federal level. So I think we will continue those efforts as well as others. So, all right, I think that's it for council comments. I will ask our acting deputy city managers, are there any comments from you all?
Just one is to echo, first of all, I get it out of my hair and members of council. Just to echo one of your comments, the lab, the new, not the new library, but the, the library is open in its temporary location. The hours are the same, and they are posted on the website. They're also posted on the website how you can get there, what bus routes to take and things of that nature. So please, please, please go by, check the library out. It really looks nice, and we look forward to seeing residents there. That's it.
Terrific, thank you so much. All right, now we will move to our voting session. I think we may have minutes, but I forgot which ones. We'll do it next week. Okay, remind me, I'm sorry to see clerk. And I, our brief is the Second Reading Ordinance Amending the Ethics Code. This, no changes have been made since the first reading ordinance. Would someone like to move the Second Reading Ordinance Amending the Ethics Code? Councilwoman DiBala, move. Do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, any questions or comments? No, all right, seeing none. So this is the Second Reading Ordinance. We need to do the, all right, we will do, call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, the next item we have is a discussion of proposal from Collaborative Strategies. As folks will remember, last week, Councilmember Kovar had requested, and council agreed with, asking the city attorney to write a resolution directing city staff to request a proposal from Collaborative Strategies. This proposal was to build upon the work that they had conducted over the summer. And we're looking at taking proactive measures to foster effective decision-making and communications between the city's elected officials, city management, and our unions particularly, ASME Local 3399. We, the proposal, it's up on the website. We've had a chance to review. I know city staff have had, also had a chance to review. And tonight is our opportunity to ask any questions or discuss it and with the potential of having a resolution next week directing staff to enter into the contract. Councilmember Kovar, did you have anything to add given that you raised it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that brief explanation, mayor. And again, this builds on the initial slightly smaller contract that Collaborative Strategies worked on for the city, although this is getting more into sort of the implementation phase of the work that they would potentially be doing with us. I was actually pleased that the dollar amount's low and not, not much higher than the earlier one and maybe a little bit less than I had imagined that it might be. This is a particularly important proposal because we're right in this transition time period. And several of my colleagues just alluded to the municipal elections and the, the number of, but that's great. And I agree with that, but there's going to be a lot of new faces up, up here. And I think that combined with our need to try to find ways of ensuring a more collaborative type of process going forward. And we've periodically had, we've had peaks and areas with labor relations. And I think this is an important way to, to try to address it. So I think, to me especially, the piece that relates to the transition and the onboarding and the assistance for the, for the new members of the council as well as potentially for future new staff, it's a great proposal. And I think that overall, it would just be a, a net plus to the work that we're trying to do. And I think everybody up here on the council appreciates the work that all the staff do. We generally see the managers and some of the senior people up here before us making presentations and occasionally others. But the rank and file people and the people who really do so much of the work are probably less visible in the council, but really doing equally important work. And I think this is a way of understanding that and recognizing that and helping to facilitate a improved relationship with them. So I enthusiastically support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. And we do have our city attorney with us this evening if anyone had any questions regarding this. And I don't know if Mr. Clark and Ms. Grisby, if you wanted to say a few words. All right. All right.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Grigsby and I have reviewed the proposal. And we are currently working with Collaborative Strategies to iron out a few things. And then once we, those things are ironed out, we'll be moving forward with a contract with Collaborative Strategies.
Great.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Councilmember Smith.
I want to thank Councilmember Kovar for bringing this to the council. Last week, I abstained on moving this forward. I think that this would be a great proposal, but I think with only a few weeks left before we have a future council, I think that council should weigh in on what this proposal should be and what they would like to see because they will be in the seat for the next two years. So I will once again abstain, but I do thank Mr. Kovar and everyone else on working on this proposal.
Thank you. Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a very good, good move, particularly with the transition. And I had a couple of specific questions about contracting that I think the city attorney addressed and you all just touched on. So as I understand it, generally, the city goes out to bid for contracts over a certain size. And as I understand it, the council, this is well under that. So that was one of my questions. And then I had an additional concern about some of the details of contracting. So I'm glad to hear that you all are looking at that. It saves me the, having to talk about it now. So I think I, my questions have resolved and I'm satisfied to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman DiBala. Councilmember Kovar, did you have a follow-up?
Oh, yeah, just briefly. And I appreciate my colleague, Mr. Smith's comments. And I understand that in, you know, maybe in an ideal world, if things were just breaking at a different time, that's where we could be. But I think when I remind myself of when I first got on the council, and I think maybe I knew that we would occasionally have to vote on labor contracts, but that was kind of about it. And it was a, it was a good, maybe six to eight months during the time I was on the council in my first term before I started to kind of see how that aspect of it fit in with everything else we were doing. Maybe I was a slow learner in that, I'm not really sure. But I think my concern would be, and I'm not trying to talk you into just offering this perspective, my concern would be that if we wait for that, for the next council, a lot of time is going to go by. And it feels to me like it's something we need to kind of set in motion now. So that's why I've ended up where I'm at. But I understand where you're coming from as well. Thanks.
Councilwoman DiBala, your...
Yeah, I apologize. I forgot one other point, which is to just clarify for myself and everybody else. So this relationship building is outside of the formal contract negotiations. Just wanted to say that so that everybody's clear on that. And that's an important point, particularly for any new, any incoming new council members to understand. As, as Councilmember Kovar said, there's a formal negotiation process and how that works is how that works set up. But this is to lay the groundwork for a stronger relationship so those will hopefully go better. Thank you.
Great. All right, not seeing any other hands or questions. We will move on to our next item, work session. Thank you to the city attorney for joining us. The next item on our list is a COLTA appointment. And did the C. Clark want to speak to it? Thank you.
I can say just a few words. We, although we are outside of our normal recruitment and appointment season, that will start up again after the election and appointments will be made in January. In this instance, we have a resident who used to serve on COLTA who has applied to serve again. And a lot of the COLTA members right now are very inexperienced. And staff thought it would be a good idea to move ahead with her appointment at this time out of the cycle. And there are, I think there are four vacancies on COLTA, or three or four. So there will still be spaces available for the January, for the recruitment that will take place after the election.
Great, thank you. And thank you to yourself and staff and the members of the COLTA Board for bringing this to our attention and moving forward before we had an issue. So I appreciate it. Any questions or anything? Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, I just have two comments. It's good that there's still space because I talked to someone today who might be interested. But seriously, we had set up this process to do committee recruitment twice a year to avoid having the constant flow of individual applications coming through. But in this case, with so few people on COLTA, as you may recall from the last time we talked about recruiting, and made appointments with so few people on COLTA to start with and their inexperience, and as I understand it, a couple of cases that may come up before January, I feel that this is an appropriate bending of our general guidelines to do this, to do appointments only once every, every six months. So I think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Any other comments or anything? No, we're good? All right.
Mayor Stewart, I guess I should say the individual's name. It's Lauren Price.
All right, thank you. And it is on the cover sheet. So thank you very much. And her application was circulated to the city council and we will vote on that next week. So I believe we are done, right? Did I miss anything? All right, we will, Saturday is a memorial for Ms. Larson and Sunday, the Street Festival. I'm sure there are many other things happening, but good night, everyone, and thank you very much. We're adjourned.[1787.92][1787.92]